Good afternoon, everyone. The meeting of the Sacramento Housing Authority and City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan?
Here.
Councilmember Laloie?
Here.
Councilmember Talamontes is expected momentarily. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Councilmember Maple?
Here.
Vice Mayor Guerra?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Mayor Protem Veng?
Here.
I'm Mayor Steinberg.
I'm here. Let me ask if Councilmember Jennings would please consider doing the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nesean people, the Southern Mido, Valley and Plains Miwok, Patwin-Winton peoples, and the people of the Wilt and Ranteria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contribution, and lives. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings, and good afternoon to everyone. I know that Councilmember Maple would like to pull item one, and so I think we're going to just consider the consent calendar an actual item for us to address because I think it's that important. Let me ask Executive Director Dozier if you have any opening comments over the overall meeting, any...
So, the comment that I would make regarding the item, the consent item that's being pulled, the purpose of this particular item is to allocate the state funds, the ACHAP funds, that are necessary to continue operations, and so that's what this particular agenda item seeks to accomplish.
And I have a feeling that that ultimate decision is not going to be in controversy. So, I wouldn't worry about that, but I think it is an opportunity, an appropriate opportunity, to talk about some of the issues around the site, and I know that's what Councilmember Maple wants to talk about and help lead that discussion. So, ultimately, we want and need the money, so I'm confident in saying that. So, why don't... Do you want to make a presentation? Or do you want to...
It was a consent item, so we didn't...
You didn't have a... That's fine. So, we all know what this is, right? We're getting a lot of state money. Four and five now, we've continued, I'd say with pride. The big city mayor's led the way, and your mayor may have been the chair when we devised this idea to make sure that cities got direct allocations, and it's good. We just need to continue it and keep it going. I know the administration is supportive and has delivered results. Eleven hundred beds a night, as we say, as I say many times a week, from a low of less than 100 when we started. Not enough, as we know, but this is one of the projects, of course, that has been funded. The statistics are good in terms of the numbers of people helped. I know I have some questions about a lot of it, but really, I think it is an opportunity to talk about how we address issues surrounding our facilities, and with that, I'm going to hand it over to my colleague, Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor, and I really appreciate that overview, too, because I do want to say that I do support the allocation of this funding. I don't want that to be in anyone's mind whether or not I support that because I know that we desperately need... The WX Shelter is a really important component of our overall shelter system and the spaces that we need desperately more of, but I do want to call out some concerns and ask some questions, and so I know this is a collaborative agreement, too, with SHRA, with VOA, and with the city, and so, you know, I'm not sure if we have representatives from those three categories, but my questions will kind of be probably at least one to each group, so whoever feels like they are best able to answer. And I want to state that my reason also for doing this, besides making transparent my concerns and some of the questions that I have, is also, you may recall, we, as a body, recently passed a, you know, giving authority to the city manager to open up even more sites, which is the right thing, and we need to make sure that we have more sites. And as a part of that, Vice Mayor Guerra added to that, saying, hey, we need to make sure that we have a good neighbor policy for each one of these new sites, which I do agree with, but, you know, that really got me thinking about what is, what are the current good neighbor policies that we currently have in place? How are they working? And, you know, if they're not working, what is our plan to address that as we will move forward and open up more sites? So, I passed out a few photos that I took this morning to my colleagues as I drove by. I drive by this shelter every single day. I live two blocks away, and, you know, it has a lot of challenges. For one, I would say that there's a large encampment that's outside of the gates. We know this. If you've driven by, you've seen it. It's been there for quite some time. It's often blocking the sidewalk, and it frequently spills out into the street, to the point where people, you know, frequently almost get hit by vehicles that are driving down X Street. And then, of course, on any given day or night, you'll find that there is, you know, drug dealing, there's sex trafficking, and there's even, you know, what some might call it a bike chop shop that's out there often, and so those are just a few examples of what my community members are witnessing every day, including myself, and I would say without a doubt, my office receives more complaints about this area of my district than anywhere else. So, it's really, really concentrated, and it's a very big concern for the neighbors. And, you know, our office is inundated with these complaints, and I know, you know, we reach out often to our partners to help address it, but it's gotten to a point where honestly, I'm very frustrated, too. I know the neighbors are and other community members, so I just wanted to bring this conversation to light, and so I have the good neighbor policy here. So, this was drafted and put into place in October of 2021, and so I took some time to read through this, and, you know, just had a couple of questions that we'll go through. So, at the very beginning of the document, it reads, "The good neighbor policy is a set of community agreements for respecting our neighbors and institutions. These policies will be applied during the operation of the X Street Navigation Center." And so, my first question is, for that term will be applied, like, who's ultimately responsible for ensuring that the things that are in this document actually do get applied? I'm not sure who the best person is.
So, I'll get started while I see Mario is coming up to the microphone. We were all a party to the discussions and the development of the good neighbor policy, and we worked very closely between SHRA and the city. A lot of SHRA's responsibilities were really working with VOA and the provider in terms of the operations and working with the guests, but in addition to that, it's a collaboration with the city and the different departments about the actual perimeter of the shelter. And so, I didn't know if you had something, Tanya, to contribute, or was that Mario?
Mario.
Okay, Mario.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yes, it has been a collaboration. My understanding is the history of it has been that your predecessor's office was intimately involved in terms of that collaboration, and I've also shared with... Actually, there's been some change in staffing, so I think some things might have, quite honestly, fallen to the wayside, some things that we were doing, but I've exchanged information, contact information with the new staff members here, and it is a collaboration, I think, and especially with the perimeter that clearly would fall on the, more on the responsibility of the city and our PD impact team. I believe that the navigation center would also fall under the citywide protocols that were presented to council on August 1st, and it would qualify as a critical infrastructure because it's a navigation center, and we can address issues like that. Like I said, I've shared contact information so we can get... I understand the situation has gotten a little bit out of control in the last, especially in the last few months, so we are backlog after the injunction has been lifted, but we are standing up the IMT, which we presented. We have three teams, three rapid response contact teams that are currently deployed, and we're training up additional, we're doing additional training sessions so that we can expand our use of overtime and bring additional officers into our impact team in coordination with DCR. So, it is a collaborative effort. We have our DCR outreach teams that can coordinate with the VOA and with SHRA in order to address those concerns, and then we can use our process that we adopted and using the critical infrastructure ordinance in order to address some of the issues that we see growing around the encampment, and I think that's a good way to address it.
Okay, okay. Thank you, and part of my goal in doing this is just, I'm going to walk through some of the things that are in the community agreement, just so the public also knows what some of those things are, and because I do get a lot of questions. So, you know, under center operation, one of the things it reads, priority for beds will be offered to unhoused adults in the immediate vicinity of the navigation center. So, one of the questions I have is, do you think that that policy kind of leads to people congregating outside because they're trying to get into the shelter, or do we feel like this is just a coincidence that people are camping outside?
Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
There's also the ones down there, too, if those are easier. It's totally up to you.
Thank you. So, currently, the referrals are coming in through the coordinated access system, coordinated entry, so I don't think that that would be a reason to lead for congregation. Oh.
Currently, the referrals are coming in through the coordinated entry system, coordinated access, so I don't think that the reason people are congregating in the vicinity is because, for that reason, because we're prioritizing, because they're all coming into, through coordinated access.
Okay, so the coordinated access system is able to identify when people are within the vicinity, as it states in the agreement, and then they're put in that way?
That is correct, because we have people out on the street doing outreach.
Okay, okay. So, that just, yeah, I think that that was something that first came to mind to, for me, as something that could possibly be... There's often the rumor mill in some of the encampments, as we found out with some of our other sites, where people hear about something, and then they find their way over to there, thinking that they're going to be able to access it, and so I just wasn't sure if that was the experience. So, next, under noise, it says, "All noise from outside activities would be consistent with normal activities in the neighborhood and would not have significant impact on the neighborhood." So, I would say, based on the complaints that I've received, it's obvious that this policy is not being followed, so is that, again, is that a PD responsibility?
I think so. That can be reported through 311, whether it's a PD or code enforcement, depending on where the noise is originating from and what the code violation would be. I think we can address it through that system as well.
So, would that be taking an order of priority as if anyone else from anywhere other place in the city was submitting a 311 request, or...
I think because this neighborhood policy is in place and we have direct contact information, I think we can, we can certainly elevate it in that manner.
Okay, and then, next, under cleanliness, it reads, "The area around the center shall be kept pristine." Again, I think we know that that's not being followed, so on, we know, in fact, that the shelter is significantly impacted by trash and that the sidewalks are often impassable, so is, whose responsibility is that? Is that PD? Is that, should we be calling Forensic Clean? Is that...
On the outside, on the perimeter, on the outside, if it's on the public, if it's on public property outside of the area, it would be city's responsibility. I believe we have a current, we have contracts with Forensic Clean that are doing citywide types of cleanups, and so we can take care of that. Now, there might be other jurisdictions around that area, and depending, we'll work with, depending on where we find that trash to be located. I know that other agencies, like Caltrans, for example, we do have a weekly meeting with Caltrans because there are adjacencies and there's locations that are there, and we would work with them to coordinate on that.
Okay, thank you. And then, on the third item in that same category, it reads, "The housing authority will contract with a selected nonprofit to remove debris, dumping, and graffiti within the surrounding area." So, do we, which nonprofit has that contract?
That's Downtown Streets.
Downtown Streets, okay. And then, in terms of their performance, can anyone speak to how they feel about their performances?
Yeah, they're doing excellent. They're out there weekly. We meet with them weekly, and they have folks daily collecting trash, and they share with us on a weekly basis how many needles are collecting off the street and how many gallons of trash they're collecting off the street.
Okay, so it's just that we're inundated under the amount of trash. We're not able to pick it all up under that contract, and so that's where Forensic Clean and others come in?
Correct.
Okay, and so, on the, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm just going to say it out loud for transparency. The fifth item in the same category reads, "Drug use and sales are not allowed around the center site," and so obviously, this policy is not being followed. Whose responsibility is that?
That clearly would be a PD, PD responsibility, not just PD impact, you know? If there are crimes, if there's reports of crimes occurring, and I would urge that if there is crime in progress, if those kinds of things get reported to 911, obviously. On the drug use, and we do see that occur quite a bit in encampments, and we do try to work with our county partners to get folks enrolled into, you know, behavioral health programs and services. We do have the city-county teams that are available, and we can also deploy them into that area.
And then, I swear, thank you for indulging me, and so, my next item, this is under safety and security surrounding the center site. It reads, "Loitering, camping, and informal food and clothing distribution around the site are not allowed." I'm personally am not concerned about food or clothing distribution, but there very clearly is loitering, there's camping, these provisions are not being followed, so I'm assuming this goes back to PD and the city-county teams?
I think a coordinated effort there. If there are code violations, clearly, we can use our PD impact team to enforce those. If there are some other softer things that we can use our outreach or develop some relationships with the folks who are out there feeding, for example, or doing stuff like that, then we can, we can work, we can work.
And I personally don't, I don't see an issue with that. We haven't, if we do have people that come by, they're really respectful, and I don't see them being an issue with, like, trash, or I think it's more so the camping. That's the thing that was explicitly told to the neighbors. And then, I think this might be a question for you. So, under the last item in that same category, it reads, "There will be one point of contact for citizens to address their concerns, and all concerns will be addressed promptly." So, who's the main point of contact for those citizen complaints?
I think my mic is on?
Yeah, you're good.
My understanding, that was VOA, and they have a point of contact, and they're the main person for any type of complaints or issues, and then they, in turn, can refer to the appropriate.
Okay, and so then, can you share any data on how many complaints have been filed, what they've been regarding, and then how they were addressed?
Let me call on our VOA folks. Amanda? Good afternoon.
Councilmember Maple, it's very nice to meet you. So, my name is Amanda Byard. I'm the director of the X Street Navigation Center. I represent VOA. At the start of the X Street Navigation Center, my phone number was passed out, and I am the main point of contact in the community. So, when community members have an issue or a concern, it is addressed by myself, and then I will root it to the correct party. So, that might be DCR, DST, that might be our own outreach team, or myself.
Okay. Have you, have you kept any data on those complaints as they've come in? So, for example, how many...
We have not really tracked data. We are more prioritizing getting it addressed as quickly as possible.
Okay.
I do know SHRA has been monitoring our 311 tickets, so we do have a log of those that have been placed.
Okay, awesome. And then, my last question, and this is, I know that the meetings happened previously under the community meetings, under my predecessor. Have these been, do these still happen?
They do not.
Okay, okay, so, thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Okay.
That's it for my questions, and I just wanted to make a couple of comments if I can. You know, again, I want to, I want to thank you. I know you, I know everyone's working really hard, and I think the shelter's been a benefit overall to Sacramento and their ability to address unsheltered homelessness, but I also believe that it's been a detriment to the direct surrounding neighborhood, and it's not the shelter itself, it's, I think, the fact that we have not enforced this good neighbor policy that I think is a good policy if we can work together to address it. So, one of the first things that I'd love to start doing is, if we can start reconvening those meetings, bring the neighbors back in, bring all the relevant partners, DCR, PD, Caltrans, everyone, so that we can, you know, figure out ways that we can work in partnership to get some of these things done and back into compliance. I think that would go a very long way with the neighbors who contact me. I'm not kidding you, every day, sometimes multiple times a day, and the fervor and the frustration is really palpable, and so I feel like it would be remiss of me not to ask these questions and to bring this up. The other thing that I think is, would be really helpful is if we think about maybe updating this good neighbor policy. One thing I would love to see in here is really outline roles and responsibilities, who's responsible for what, so that the community knows when they read this. They know exactly, okay, if I see something, I need to be calling PD. If I see this, I need to be reporting this to 311. If I see this, I need to be contacting SHRA or VOA, so that it's just very clear, because right now, I think it's not very clear, including updating my own contact information. It's still routed to Jay Sheneer's email, I believe, on what I saw on the website. I also, you know, would just like to expressly ask that any policies that are currently not being followed, that they be enforced, and I think that this is really important because we created a good neighbor policy with the explicit reason that we knew that there could be negative issues associated with this, so, you know, not having this hopefully go into a big bucket of 311 requests that, you know, we just make our way through there, that we say, we made a commitment to this community, we made promises to them that we're not following, and I would love to see that some real enforcement on these specific policies so that not just, you know, the neighbors that are living directly nearby, but so that those who are in the shelter, too, can feel, feel safe and feel good about their experience as well, and hopefully have really good outcomes. And so, those were the main points that I wanted to hit. Thank you very much for being here to answer my questions, and I believe some of my colleagues might also have questions.
So, I just want to be clear, because there may be some, what is the relevance of these questions to the funding decision? Well, it's relevant. It is relevant, because even though I'm confident we're going to approve this funding, at a discretion, the council could say, no, we're not going to do this anymore because of the impact on the neighborhood. We're not going to do that, but it's a relevant line of inquiry. In fact, I think it's really important, and by the way, it's not about the agency's operation of the, of the shelter, VOA. It really isn't. It's about all of us. It's about all of us. It is about how we are implementing the various policy decisions that the city council has made over the last year, and I know I'm going to get into some detailed questions myself about this, because I think this is just one example, and it is an example of the great frustration that we all have, including the staff, by the way, who are working their hearts out. It's not a question of hard work, but we need to have these conversations about when we're going to be able to assure Councilmember Maple and her constituents and all of the members here and their constituents that there is some relief on the way. What is the order of priority, for example? That's my first question. And should this be a higher priority because it's adjacent to a shelter, and should a good neighbor policy implementation be a higher priority than something that's not close? I mean, these are the things we need to talk about, because the one thing we cannot have is the public and the policymakers being uncertain about what the expectations are, what the timelines are, at least approximate timelines for, for relief, and that's what I hear Councilmember Maple asking, and I think it's completely appropriate, and I want to have this full conversation this afternoon, again, not about the agency's operation of this, this shelter. So, it's about all of us. Okay, I got others. I got the Vice Mayor, I got Councilmember Talamontes, I got Mayor Protem Veng.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and in fact, that was going to be my comment, that the purpose of this conversation is because of not just the shelter itself, but the, all of the unintended consequences that go around with a shelter in an area, and, you know, in my opinion, this has gone long, gone far too long, long enough. Should have been resolved, you know, when this, this encampment grew to the size it did, and even around on the Broadway side, not just on the WW side, but, and it sure doesn't give any confidence to the public if we're going to add other locations, if this is the condition that we're going to continue. So, this is just one council member's point of view, but we need to, we, and when this conversation occurred, there was a commitment to the community that there would be a, you know, no camping around this area. It was intended to address the encampments that were happening around the area, and so absolutely, in my opinion, I think that the cleanliness, the safetiness must be addressed. And, and as we move forward, because I've been committed in making sure that we provide resources, additional resources on top of what's already in the southeast area, but if this is the outcome, how can that be okay for anyone? So, I think urgency is, is important, and immediate action is important to make sure that particularly around sensitive uses, sensitive areas, that this, that this occur, that this be responded to. I agree, this funding is necessary and supportive, and that's, that's why I'll move the item, Mr. Mayor, but I'll move it with direction that both SHRA, the city, and, and request that VOA begin to track all these concerns as they come in, so that we know in which level or what triage is happening, but specifically for SHRA and the city to immediately respond to a good neighbor policy, because it was a, those, that whole conversation, which a lot of it was led out of District 6 about creating a good neighbor policy, led to, you know, creating some commitments and insurances on shared values for the community on how we move forward with this. With that, that's my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. That's moved. Seconded by Councilmember Kaplan. There's a motion on the table. Let's hear from the rest of the members, then, and me. Councilmember Talamontes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Honestly, I just find it unacceptable that we, as the city of Sacramento, aren't adhering to our own good neighbor policy that was established on this council, that was voted by this council, and we need to do better. You know, we're asking our neighbors to trust us with standing up more sites, more safe grounds, with more facilities, and I support that, but at the same time, when we make a promise of saying, hey, we're going to put a shelter up, we need to make sure that we follow through on our good neighbor policy. It's one of the most important things that we can do, and we, as council members, have to be able to communicate truthfully with our constituents and, you know, to our city management and to all our partners involved. This kind of thing makes it nearly impossible. It shouldn't have to result to Councilmember Maple asking these questions on the dais and still not having answers to be able to give back to the community that she represents as a council member, that we, as a city of Sacramento, as a council, together collectively represent. So, I don't have any questions, but I do have an ask that we get answers to Councilmember Maple as soon as possible. She and the community deserve answers from us, and I hope with the new system that we have set up to do homeless response, I hope we have more success than that, and that's about it. I just, I just hope we do better.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Veng?
Thank you.
Um, how was my comment, too?
Sorry.
It's okay, no worries. I'm still learning the buttons, too.
No, I think I did it.
Oh, you unmuted me? Oh, you muted me. Okay, no worries. Thanks, Mayor, I really appreciate it.
It's power.
It's power. All right. Thanks, Mayor. First, I just wanted to thank the SHR team for bringing this item just to, to council, and I agree with Vice Mayor Guerra that this funding is important and necessary, but definitely want to take this moment just to say thank you to Councilmember Maple for her line of questionings and really bring to light some of the concerns around good neighbor policies that haven't been in compliance, and so, you know, I know our office will be holding a follow-up meeting with community residents, our Medevue Neighborhood Association, and also staff, VOA staff, at the Medevue Navigation Center as well, and I actually think this is really perfect timing, because Councilmember Maple had mentioned that it might be good for all of us, for us to revisit our good neighbor policy to see if, one, we're in compliance, and, two, if there are any updates that's needed. I don't know how often we update our good neighborhood policies, but I think this might be the opportunities as we hit the reset button on this new round of funding, and to kind of evaluate all of, all of our good neighbor, all of our good neighbor policy throughout, throughout the city, especially those that have a shelter in their district. I know I have one in Medevue, and so I just really wanted to uplift Councilmember Maple's questions and ensure that, along with the direction I support that, and I think we should actually take a more in-depth look at all of our policies, especially with the ones that has shelter in specific districts, so just wanted to echo my support on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Laloie?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Councilmember Maple, thank you so much. I commend you for asking the questions that are, they need to be asked, and that is, how efficient can we be? And, number two, accountability, and I think something that, when it comes to the efforts and the money that has been spent to combat homelessness, we kind of missed the efficiency of what we're doing. So, thank you so much for your leadership and pointing this out. I do have some suggestions. You know, when I see a $4.6 million, and yes, it is a state fund, but at the end of the day, it's the taxpayers' money, and we have to show what we did with the money, what was the return on that investment. So, I would like to see on future reports, when from $4.6 million, $2.9 million of it is staff and operations, what does that mean exactly? If we can get a breakdown on that. And as one of the representative from VOA expressed, that, you know, if there's, if there's cleaning that's being done outside of the environment of the shelter, and that contract has gone to downtown street cleaning, then why do we need to pay another vendor, Forensic Clean, to come and clean up right after that? So, that, that means we have two separate entities that the taxpayers are doing, that are paying to do one entity's job, so that's, that's kind of concerning for me. Also, I understand... Also, I understand that, you know, going back to accountability, and this is something that I like to come back to our own city staff, is that we hear 311 constantly, but if this facility is under contract, and they're walking, and the operators are walking out of this facility and seeing what's happening outside, do we really need to count on the residents' 311 call, or should we count on the operators' calls or requests for help? Because after all, this, you know, this project was set up to kind of create a relief for the community, for the residents, and now we're putting that additional work back on the residents. We have a contract. It's a $4.6 million contract. The operator has accepted responsibility to make sure it's operated in accordance with the good neighbor policy. So, now we're asking the residents, well, if you have problems, call 311, which we, unfortunately, it's not the most efficient thing these days because of the number of the calls that go through. So, I'm hoping that we can create more robust policies and hold the operators responsible for some of the things that need to happen, not only within that vicinity, but the surrounding vicinity, because that's part of their contract. But again, I just want to say thank you, Councilmember Maple. It's a pleasure being your colleague today. I tell you that much. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. And I also want to thank Councilmember Maple for bringing up this concern. It's a concern that's not unique to District 5. You know, as someone who has the River District imminently in my immediate district and a lot of services in District 4 as well, this is a pretty common issue that arises, and how do we actively manage what happens just outside the doors of areas that we want to be safe and healing places for people who are trying to get their lives back on track to being housed? And so, I do just want to say that, I want to echo, I think, Councilmember Talamontas' frustration, I think, because I think that this is one of those instances where I feel like the council, through the work of our prior colleague, Jay Chenier, was very specific in terms of what we wanted to happen, and it's not happening. I actually went out of my way to drive on Broadway behind the X Street and then went up Alhambra today on my way into City Hall, and, oh my goodness, it has gotten so much worse since the last time. And it has not been that long since I went by there. I mean, it doesn't look like any DCR outreach has been done. I mean, it doesn't look like a lot of trash pickup has happened. Maybe it has, and it's just generating that quickly. But I just have to say that I think part of delegating, like, none of us up here want to be micromanagers of the city team. You know, all of us want to feel like we can say, here's the direction, and trust expertise to get it done in alignment with council direction. And in this case, it feels like this is an important moment as we're getting ready to hopefully stand up more safe ground sites, to really step back and make sure. It shouldn't have taken this for city staff and our contractors to say, hey, wait a minute, there's a problem here. And we need to maybe sit down at the table and figure out who our contacts are and problem solve that, because that was the direction of this council. And so, I just want to make sure that that's really clear, that like, as we stand up these sites, and again, echoing what's been heard from my colleagues in other districts, lifting in the River District's voice, I get the frustration of you bring this service in, and this is part of one of the big barriers we work against, right, Mayor, when we're trying to open additional sites, is people are like, I don't want a site here, because what if it looks like that? So, we're not doing ourselves any favor when we allow sites to get to the point where we are now spending as much money responding to what's happening outside of the doors of the site as we are potentially with what's happening inside of those doors. And so, I just want to, like, further, I guess, direct in alignment with what the Vice Mayor said, like, we need to get this a little bit more dialed in on our side, because it should have never been allowed to get to this point. It should have never needed to get the people to walk out the front door of the shelter and say, oh, my goodness, something's wrong here. So, I just want to lift that up as well.
Yep. Thank you. I turn it over to Director Dozier, and then I'm going to speak.
Well, I just really appreciate the conversation that we're having and the opportunity for us to continue to collaborate and to really meet the goals that were outlined in the good neighbor policy. So, we'll be working very closely with all parties involved so that we can do better for the community. I also wanted to respond to Councilmember Laloie, where you were mentioning about what does the $2.6 million pay for? And there's a lot of services that are offered there. VOA is there for 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Everyone receives three meals a day. There's maintenance of the sprung shelters, maintenance of the bathrooms. Those are portable, so they're not just regular bathrooms, so they really require a lot of maintenance, the showers, the trailers, the rehousing services. So, for people who come there, we actually help them with security deposit, application fees, rent for up to six months, cameras on the property, leases with Caltrans. So, there are a lot of services that are provided, it's very robust, and that's what's necessary, that we found, to really help our unhoused neighbors really move beyond their situation. So, even though the number may seem like a lot, it really goes for the deep wraparound services that are needed. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was up there.
You know, when I see $2.9 staff and operations, and then right underneath that, I see $500,000 going to the housing fund, $332,000 going for security, $300,000 going for street cleanup. So, I go back to my original question, the $2.958 million, so almost $3 million, when it goes to staff and operations, I just like to see in future conversations, if there is a breakdown of that, so the public can also see exactly how this $3 million is spent to keep that property going and, you know, being a positive move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So, this is really an important conversation, and colleagues are right, it is, we're talking about one particular area that's very important, and it is especially compelling because of, as Councilmember Valenzuela and others said, the message it sends to other communities when we ask them to put any kind of homeless facility in their neighborhood or along their business corridor. But it could be, we could be talking about 25 different places in the city and be having the same conversation. Next week, I've talked to the city manager, I will not be here, but I've asked the manager and Assistant City Manager Laura to agendize a presentation by the new head of our incident command structure. This was my State of the City speech, too, two weeks ago, Mr. Pedro, Assistant Chief Pedro, to actually provide detail to the council and the community about how this incident command structure is actually going to work. Because let me distill what I think to be the problem. This is not about lack of hard work. You've got dedicated people out here, right? Not only the VOA, but our city team. We know how hard you're working. We also know that you're drinking from the proverbial fire hose in terms of the number of new encampments that arise while you're trying to deal with the backlog 311 and all that. And so, I know I don't speak for Councilmember Maple or anybody, but I know that if it were me making this presentation, as Councilmember Maple did, and your response was that it was going to take X number of months to get to a full cleanup of that site, I might be a little disappointed, I might argue, but I would be generally okay, excuse me, I'm sorry, I would be generally okay with knowing and having an expectation about when my area could be provided the relief. And that would be me. The problem here is we don't know. She doesn't know. In fact, you can't answer it here today. And this is a, talking about critical infrastructure, something next door to one of our major two shelters, and it's a hazard, and the message goes out to the entire community that this is what, this is what happens when we build something here? And so, I look at things that we've done, and then I want to know about implementation, and I want more information consistently before this council. It's been 10 months now since the council approved the city-county partnership agreement. And one of the pieces of that that doesn't get reported much, but I know it because I wrote it, is that we obligated ourselves with the county to engage assertively in 20 encampments a month, 20 a month. And the county was taking some time to get its number of mental health workers so that we could form the 10 teams. No progress report on how close they are, and I don't know how many encampments we are engaged in every single month. And I ask the question round and round and round, and I keep going back to the agreement, but it's cotton candy. It's just, it's never, oh, now we're working on Alhambra and W because that was a decision. 28th and C, where we know we had some success, and I think that was good, but I now know that we're dealing with terrible problem at 30th and C and 22nd and C. And so, I think what the policymakers want are not false promises or overpromising, but much more organization in terms of the priorities and when we're going to get to the different priorities in this city. And the truth is the truth, you know? Famous Jack Nicholson line, you can't handle the truth, we can handle the truth. But I think we need to know what the timeline is and the priorities for some of these hottest of hotspots here. And then what we're going to do when we quote "move" people, which I know, I'm now, I'm now your pro-enforcement mayor, but let me tell you something. This strategy of flooding the zone with all this enforcement business will have its limitations until those safe grounds are up, until we get those tiny homes, and until the county steps up its game on full-service partnerships. And we're going to be talking about that later in the week with them. But I think the questions Councilmember Maple is asking are really reasonable, and I would just sort of add to them. Where is this particular set of encampments adjoining the WOC shelter? Where is it on the priority list? Is it 20th? Is it 10th? Is it 35th? Is it 3rd? When is it? And when might we get to it? Not because she's put political pressure on her, because this is the issue of the day, but what is the, what is the natural priority based upon its urgency, the extremities, the behaviors, et cetera? I've had this conversation with the police department. If I hear another claim, and I, not claim, it's true, sex trafficking, open-air drug dealing, make some arrests. I don't buy it that you have to see the thing in action. I don't buy it. Got undercover, you got creativity, you got all kinds of things. We cannot let open-air sex trafficking and drug dealing go on in our city, in our community, in these endless encampments. Enough of the excuses. Enough of them. We strengthened our enforcement protocol. We don't expect miracles overnight, because that's not possible. But I'd like us to go back to clearly articulating geographical and encampment priorities based on the partnership agreement, and we'll be having those conversations, get to the county this week, based upon the compliance or enforcement of our critical infrastructure, sidewalk, and private property ordinances, so that these members simply know approximately when we're going to get to their area. That's not unreasonable. It would be unreasonable if we said, clean it all up in the next month. It's not possible. The numbers are too large. We know that. But when there's no answer for how we spend months at 28th and C, and one person apparently is enrolled in services, which I know is a county function, and then there's now a major encampment at 30th and C, in part, a transfer of those folks, when this problem has existed since, as somebody said, since Jay Chenier was the council member, which is now, he's been gone now for a year? And it doesn't rise to the level to say, how are we going to deal with this? There's something not right. And that's why this discussion, as hard as it is, has got to continue until we're clear about reasonable, aggressive but reasonable timeline expectations, and what we're doing to comply with some of these things that we spend so much heartache and political capital and everything else on to bring forward as policymakers. It's frustrating for everybody, including you. But I think we're asking for a higher level of organization in terms of what gets communicated and how it's communicated to the community ultimately, but to these representatives that don't have answers. Katie Maple deserves to know, again, even if it is X months from now, when there's going to be an organized effort to clean up that area and help the people. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Let's go to item two.
Mayor, for the record, I have no public comment on that item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Whitney Hinton, Program Manager at SHRA. Staff is requesting approval of a supplemental bond allocation not to exceed $1 million for the Villa Hardine and Coral Gables project. Villa Hardine and Coral Gables is located in Medaview area of the city of Sacramento. This project is a workforce and permanent supportive housing development. In August 2020, a disposition and development agreement, taxes and bonds and loan commitments were approved to assist a developer rehabilitate 44 units and construct an additional 38 units. The affordability levels are 25%, 30%, and 50% of area median income. The developer and property management agent are the John Stewart Company. Life Steps provides onsite case management, supportive services, plus 15 hours of resident services per week, that include after-school workforce development and enrichment programs. County Behavioral Health Services provide case management and supportive services to the households in the 15 units assisted with MHSA program funds. Construction began in November of 2021, and the project was scheduled to be completed by the end of February of 2023. However, due to construction delays, the project was not completed until June of this year. The delay added an additional $3 million in construction cost. The increased cost primarily is a result of extended mitigation of mole intrusion that was discovered during the rehabilitation, the addition of fire sprinklers to the existing units, increased construction loan interest, and increase in temporary relocation expenses. The developer is filling the remaining $2 million gap by increasing the tax equity, the tax credit equity, the conventional loan, and the deferred developer fee. Last Wednesday, Villa Hardine and Coral Gables had its grand opening to welcome residents home. Mayor Protem Bang was there to help us all celebrate this outstanding achievement in the Medaview neighborhood. We heard from many speakers, but Granny was the one who touched us all. She talked about her 10-year stay at Villa Hardine prior to the rehab and just how excited she was to experience this needed change to her community. Over the years, her neighbors became her community, and her community became her family, and that's what we love to see. Prior to me closing, I would like to share some before and after pictures of this beautiful So, here on the screen, you can see this is the before, the rehab at Villa Hardine, and Granny's talked about it being pink, like Pepto Bismol. Yes. And then here is the exterior after for Villa Hardine. This is the interior prior to the rehab, and this is the interior after, the kitchen. And this is the new living area, as well as the bathroom, and the upgraded laundry facility onsite for the shared Villa Hardine and Coral Gables. And the Coral Gables was a vacant lot before, as said in the cul-de-sac. And now, this is the after photos, and then just from another angle. So, in closing, staff is requesting approval of an additional $1 million in supplemental bonds to cover the increased construction costs. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we, we don't have public testimony is what you said?
We do not have public testimony.
Okay, then. Mayor Protam Vang, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. First, I just wanted to say thank you to Whitney for her really awesome presentation. Also, just want to thank LaShelle for her leadership and Christine and so many of our partners like John Stewart and US Bank and all the partners that made this project happen. Last week, I was at the official ribbon cutting of the renovation and expansion of Villa Hardine's, which is actually in the heart of, of Mettaview. And I think many of you would agree with me that like projects like Coral Gables and Mettaview really offer stability for our families, right? Because many of them are, is literally one paycheck away. This project in particular is going to house over 300 individuals in South Sacramento. Half of those units will be for residents experiencing homelessness and the other half, you heard Whitney share, the AMI level. And this project, as many of you know, is always a accumulation of lots of months and years in the works and really hoping that my colleagues will support this item for the gap funding. And just wanted to make it clear that we are coming back because of the increased construction loan interest and the temporary relocation expensive. But we also found some mold intrusion that was discovered during the rehabilitation. And so one question I just have for LaShelle and the team is, I know that there are many buildings in our city that we oversee and just wanted to know how often and regularly SHRA actually do an inspection of our buildings?
So staff that I oversee as well, we go out and we monitor the units once a year and we do physical inspection as well as review the, the files for compliance.
If I could just add that this mold, we couldn't find until they actually took the, the sheet rock off and saw inside. So it wasn't visible from the exterior of the wall.
Great. Thank you so much. Yeah, I could think they found it and glad. I mean, these projects are really amazing because it's also about preserving the affordable housing we have, right? In addition to the expansion, I think we talk a lot about building more affordable housing, but it's also how do we preserve the ones that we already have? And this is one reason why I think this project is so beautiful and amazing. And so I, I'm, you know, really urging my colleagues to support this item so that we could get that 1 million gap finance and, and complete the project. That's it. Thank you so much. And I just really want to thank SHRA and all the partners involved for making this happen. And I think Granny's story, you know, really touched all of our hearts. She's been there for 10 years and she's seen that community improved. And as I often share, South Sacramento's and all of our residents throughout the city deserves nothing but the very best. And the quality of housing there was just amazing. And I'm really excited for all, all the families that are going to be moving in. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to second the item and also, you know, I, you know, I was scheduled to speak it with you and be there and unfortunately, you know, life, life always throws you a quick wrinkle. But I'm just very proud of this project and the movement forward. And I mean, even the issue, issue and the question about the mold, anybody who owns a home now, anybody who comes in, if you're going to go fix or repair a, anything in a bathroom, the contractor's always going to say, well, do I have to cut into the drywall? And if they, if they do, they might not even take your project because of, of the risks of what happens. So I understand the, the conditions here, but I, with that, I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. And I, this is the kind of stuff we need to continue is, is more of the permanent housing. Thank you.
Absolutely. It's great. It's, it's exactly what we want to keep doing, do more. So thank you. And thank you, the agency. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Good. That passage anyways. Thank you, Mayor Protam as well. Appreciate it. All right. That concludes our agenda, I think. Do we have a public comment on items not on the agenda on this one?
I do have one hand raised. Call-in user one.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert Davis. I wanted to say that I was impressed with what I heard today regarding everything you discussed. That's a first for me, but I'm very impressed with how you handled this. And shout out to LaShelle Dozier, another example of somebody who has integrity at City Hall. But true leadership today, Mayor and City Council. Thank you.
Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
Right. We will, we have a closed session at what time? It's only 2:57. At 3 o'clock and then we have a session at 5. The meeting of the Housing Authority and City Council is adjourned. Thank you.